It's six thirty-one, we're going to call this regular meeting of the Chavino Park City Council to order. If you would all please rise and join Conrad Kirkendall in the pledge of allegiance and Pete Miller in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Each new year brings the promise of hope and renewal. Our lives are a summation of the past, the present, and the future. We thank you, Father, for your grace and mercy in this year gone by. We ask you, Lord, for your guidance and wisdom in the year ahead. We praise you, O God, for your love and your presence in every moment of our lives. As the new year presents its opportunities and challenges, we take comfort in your words. For ask and you shall receive; search and you shall find; knock and the door shall be opened; trust and you shall be blessed. Heavenly Father, you are the source of all good things. You know our needs and our desires before we do. Help us seek you first in all that we do, and grant us the grace to accept your will in our lives. In your name we pray.
Amen. Brings us to item number four, city council member comments. Buddy?
Happy New Year, everyone. Welcome. Good to see everybody.
Maggie?
Like to welcome in the new year and all of our citizens in Chavino Park, and I think it's going to be a great year, so everybody stick with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Conrad?
Same. Happy New Year to everybody and thankful for the rain. We'd start the year off right.
Exactly. Three and a half inches in Chavino Park. Pete?
All right, so I think twenty twenty-three was a fantastic year. And so I went and I put out a top ten. I said, what were the top ten things that I am really proud of of this city? And these are in no particular order, but as you look at the water crossings that were done by the Public Works Department, saved us a bunch of money. I was impressed because when we first started doing that, nobody thought that could be done. We had the addition of two new great directors, Chavino Park. So both Kristen and Johnny, welcome. That was a great addition. We had the development of the twenty twenty-three town plan, a vision for the future. I thought that was an outstanding job. And Curtis, it had some tense moments, didn't it? We had an outstanding financial report, the funding of the investments, the dealing with the board issues. And you, thank you, Brenda, you know, you don't realize how good you got it until you don't got it. So I think there's a lot of good things that happened there. The police and the fire department staffing, overcoming the challenges this past year, we had some pretty high hill to climb there, and I thought that was done very well. The starting of the road construction for Old Chavino, Desa Valles Engineering and the Citizens Advisory Committee, I thought that was well done. So thank you, Bill, Chris, Song, and Al. The signing of the Google Fiber Agreement, and they said it couldn't be done, Curtis. You look at the five successful Chavino Park events that we had, I think they were outstanding. The day-to-day grind that the police and the fire department go through, the certification, the training, the awesome response time, very impressive. And finally, the progress on the Northwest Military. And thanks to Tex dot for making that happen, just make it happen quicker, Tex dot. So those are my top ten.
Thank you very much. Brings us to item number five, presentation, combinations, and announcements. The first item is a proclamation for Monarch Butterfly Month. We have a nice proclamation here, recognizing the month as Monarch Butterfly Month. Chavino Park, for the last eight years, has been committed to the growth of the monarch butterfly population in the United States. The population is down to about five percent of its high from the nineteen-sixties. For those of us who are old enough to have remembered living in the hill country and the delivery of radar from weather stations, we can remember the dates that the monarch butterflies would be coming into Texas, and you could see the monarch butterflies literally on the radar screen as they're showing in on TV. We can hope to be back there. I appreciate the citizens who put out the milkweed, which is what monarch butterflies live on, eat, and grow from, and leave their eggs on. Encourage everybody to continue to develop the environment in the way that we've been working for this almost decade now. Keep up the great work. Which brings us to item five point two, recognition, excellence in performance by a city employee. Sergeant Jason Ramsey, police detective. Pete?
So the Quarterly Commitment to Excellence Award recognizes individuals who demonstrate the attributes that foster quality and a focus on performance within our city. It is not the heroic events that lead to great organizations, but instead, the day-to-day commitment to the consistency in getting things done correctly. It is my honor to recognize Jason Ramsey for his commitment and dedication to the Chavino Police Department. Detective Ramsey has shown a continuous commitment to the mission, the vision, the core value statements of the police department through his work as a criminal investigator. Some of Detective Ramsey's most recent accomplishments include his work on numerous fraud-related cases. In one case involving a local builder, Detective Ramsey identified the suspect and was able to obtain an arrest warrant. Once the case became public, other fraud victims came forward, including a local area company with ties to the federal contracts, who have been defrauded by the same suspect. Detective Ramsey was able to collaborate with the FBI and included our criminal case for federal prosecution. In a second case, Detective Ramsey was able to obtain video evidence, and the suspects identified and made arrests in three felony fraud investigations, including elderly victims, within the first five days of the case investigation. And yet, a third case involving a resident at Chavino Park, Detective Ramsey was able to work with a suspect in order to secure a portion of the monetary losses suffered back to the victim. Detective Ramsey continues to work to seek justice for the victims of Chavino Park and obtain resolutions in criminal cases. Sergeant Ramsey, thank you for your commitment to excellence and for all you do for Chavino Park.
Mayor?
Maggie?
I'd like to add some admiration for Detective Ramsey. One of our citizens made me aware that a young adult in their family had gotten badly scammed on something they were doing on their cellphone, and they were in charge of their own finances and lost it all to the tune of about twelve thousand dollars. Detective Ramsey not only takes care of the elderly, as was just pointed out, but to the youth in our department. The adult in the case was really very quite happy with the results, to say the least. The young adult was ecstatic, learned a lesson, not everything is good out there. But due to Detective Ramsey, he was able to recover several thousand dollars for this young person. And really, that was, the homeowner, the citizen, is very thankful and wants him to be recognized for such. So thank you again.
Thank you, Maggie. Brings us to item number six, consent agenda. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by any alderman on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Do we have a motion to accept and/or approve items six point one through six point ten?
Make a motion to accept?
Second?
Buddy's made a motion to accept. Maggie has made a second. If there is no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries four oh. Brings us to item number seven, city manager report. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will only be considered at the request of one or more aldermen. Coincidence with each item listed, discussion will generally occur. Any item under item seven requested to be pulled will be reviewed at the end of the meeting. Is there a request to pull any of items seven point one through seven point six? There being no request, it brings us to item number eight, regular agenda items. Eight point one, discussion action, accepting the fiscal year twenty twenty-three financial statements audit. Brenda?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So ABIP, Certified Public Accountants, performed their final audit field work for the city's fiscal year twenty-three financial audits during December fourth through seventh and the twelfth, with two auditors led by Mike Del Toro, CPA. This is their first year back as the city auditors. They were the auditors for fiscal year twenty-twelve through twenty-sixteen, and now I'd like to introduce Mike, who will be providing you with more details on how the audit went. Mike?
Thank you, Brenda. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Very quickly, the report's been handed out. I believe you got a draft of that. So I'll be brief, but don't confuse being brief with the fact that I don't want to answer questions. So please, if there's any questions about the audit or the reporting, I'm here at your discretion, but it sounds like you want to have a quick meeting, so I'll be brief, but I'm open for questions. So on page one of the bound document, we have our independent auditor's report. We were engaged to perform an audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards of the United States. The purpose of that audit is to determine if the financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. That page one document with our letterhead on it states that we did find the financial statements to be in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and we called that an unmodified opinion. It's several pages long, but it spells out some of the responsibilities of management on the financial statements and responsibilities of the auditor in performing that audit. Our audit did start with a risk assessment, where we looked at the processes that the city pays vendors, pays employees, how we take money into the city. And through that risk assessment, we didn't identify any control weaknesses. There's a good amount of segregation of duties and oversight over the city's financial processes, and so we don't have any comments on a management letter that state any weaknesses. Within the financial statements, page five of the bound documents, the management discussion analysis, I'm not going to cover that in any detail, but it is an area where we give a narrative of the city's fiscal activity during the year. It's the only place you're going to see some comparative information, but it gives you a high-level overview of the city's fiscal year and how changes in the city's funds occur during the year. On page eighteen and nineteen are the balance sheets for the governmental funds. I highlight this because of your most important fund, the general fund, is listed on there. It's one of several major funds. This year's major funds included the general fund, the twenty-two bond issuance capital projects fund, the American Rescue Plan, the debt service fund, and the capital replacement fund. If it's not listed there and it's one of your funds, it's collapsed into the other column. Why are these listed as major funds? There's a quantitative analysis that we have to do to determine, based on the amount of liabilities, revenue, expenses, or assets, whether it gets presented as a major fund. And those items, those five items that I mentioned, five funds, fell into that threshold. Within the general fund, you ended your fiscal year at two point eight million dollars in unassigned fund balance. That roughly comes out to just under six months of operating reserves. That's a very healthy reserve. Best practice is anywhere between three to six months, and you're at the top end of that best practice. Your twenty-two street bond fund has about eight point four million dollars of unspent funds, uncommitted funds at the end of the fiscal year. Obviously, that's for the ongoing construction project that's going on. The American Rescue Plan is the ARPA money that we received from the feds. At the end of the fiscal year, you have about three hundred and forty-seven thousand of unspent funds, and that's sitting as a deferred revenue item on the liability side. Your debt service fund, obviously, that's a fund that you're collecting tax revenue to pay for the city's bond fund. You have about a hundred and forty-four thousand in fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. You need that fund balance to pay for the upcoming bond payments that are going to happen in early twenty twenty-four. And then your capital replacement fund, that's the fund where you have a plan to set money aside for capital replacement. You ended the year with two million dollars in committed fund balance in that fund. The proprietary fund, your water utility fund, you ended with an unassigned net position of one point nine million dollars at the end of the fiscal year. It's about twenty-five months of operating reserve. That's a pretty healthy fund balance for a water fund, but there's also got to be an analysis of what do we intend to do with our reserves in the water fund? Is it going to maintain the system? Are we going to have a full system replacement? But twenty-five months sounds very good as a reserve to have in that fund. There was a GASBEE that we adopted during the year, GASBEE ninety-six, on subscription-based information technology arrangements. Brenda and her staff did a good job of getting the data for that. You know, just one of those things, we call it job security from the GASBs when they issue these things, because it means clients are going to be calling us on how to implement that. Brenda did a real good job. We didn't have much interaction with her. She handled that very well, and that was implemented very well on her part, and so kudos to Brenda and her staff. With that, I will take any questions that you have on the audit or the audit reporting.
Okay. Before we turn to council members, Bill, do you have any comments that you'd like to share with us at this time concerning the audit report?
Well, no, I think it's always good to have a new company come in and take a look at that. Mike and his team did that. We were familiar with them the last time. I recall when we kind of got through five years with them initially, and we thought we better go out for qualifications to bid, so forth. We're like, well, okay, well, we're sure going to miss them, but they're back now. So as you would expect, they were very deliberate in the first year back, making sure that they looked at everything, and I think they did a pretty decent job deliberately doing that. The one thing that I would point out again, and Michael mentioned it, but I just wanted to highlight it, is that our fund balance increased, and I think it increased about three hundred, and I'm going to find it right here, three hundred and forty-something thousand, I've got it right here, it was three hundred and thirty thousand dollars from last year. So again, we were able to do that with cost savings throughout the year in terms of, we had a budget, we had revenues and expenses, we spent less than we pulled in. Part of that was because of interest rates, but there were also some savings. So just because we had it budgeted, we didn't spend it, we then reconciled all those funds, and you'll see later on, that was already in the consent agenda, that we didn't actually take any money out of fund balance, because we're trying to stay up at that level that we really want to do. That's the only thing that I would point out. That's a good thing that we increased that fund balance.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the council members? Pete?
I usually have a lot of questions whenever I see a financial report, but you guys did a really good job on this, and it's very, very thorough, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
And Mike, I think I grilled you with all of my questions the last time that you were here, and I want to thank you for all that you've done. We appreciate the performance and the efforts of you and your team, and we always commend Brenda. She's absolutely superstar.
Brenda was great. Brenda's superstar for sure, yeah.
Thank you very much.
I can't put that in the report, but yeah.
It is a long report, and so like, you know, you've got a copy of it. I would just remind you that you can go through it, and you've got further questions that we can answer, and if we can't answer it, we'll get Mike involved. You can touch base with them later on as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike, thank you. Leads us to item eight point two, discussion action, phase one A and phase one B, street projects update. Bill and Chris. Bill, are you going to go first, or Chris?
I'll let Chris go.
Okay.
A lot of these are going to be the same slides we've seen over and over again, but construction is progressing well.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Before we go on, do I have a motion to accept the city of Chavino Park's fiscal year twenty twenty-three audited financial statements and audited letter of management? Do we have a motion?
So.
Second.
Okay, Pete has made a motion. Conrad has seconded the motion. There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries four oh. Sorry about that, Mike.
Okay. So construction's going well. You know, wagon trail and Engate are complete. We did do a punch walk on those at the end of December and provided a punch list to the contractor for items that need to be corrected, and they're currently working on that, and they plan to have all of that completed by the end of this month. The three hundred block of Fawn is pending the final lift of asphalt. They were actually going to start that today. Weather did not work out. Same thing on Chimney Rock. Based on the weather that we have coming, I would anticipate that's not going to start until next week, maybe mid-next week, because things got to dry out. Chavino Drive has been concrete stabilized. During the last rain event a couple of weeks ago, you may have noticed a lot of mud in the street. That wasn't because the concrete stabilization failed or something happened. It was dirt washed in from outside the right-of-way into the street, so they got that cleaned up. They put the erosion control, the hailogs, where they're supposed to be. So I haven't heard anything today, so I'm assuming that didn't happen again.
It happened again.
It happened again?
Yeah.
They were just quieter about it?
I'm going to send you some pictures right now. I meant to do it earlier, I got busy today. I just, there is a stable base there, but what I see on the surface of that is a lot of dirt, which includes some rutting, surface rutting, which just confuses me, and so I'd ask you to take a look at that, and I'll ask Leonard to look at it tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll look at it tomorrow. Part of what happened there is the contractor tried to get ahead of things, and they placed topsoil behind the back of curb before they did the street, and that just wasn't the best idea. So now we've got topsoil there that keeps washing out. They won't be doing that again. And then on the one hundred and two hundred block of Fawn, excavation is complete. The contractor did ask us at the last meeting if they could bring another crew onboard to help accelerate construction. What we told them was that once they get the asphalt on Chavino Drive, then they could open up windmill. We don't want to have more than two streets in excavation at any given time. But we did tell them they could do that to help speed up construction and get them out of your town faster, because I know everyone's tired of looking at mud. Gas, they are extending the four-inch gas main from two oh four Saddle Tree to four twelve Cliffside. That should be starting beginning of February, and Mas-Tech is going to be doing that. We're not anticipating any conflicts with the roadwork that we're doing.
That's a great, that's a great news story there for those residents. I think there's three residents that are paying for the majority of that installation, but other residents en route will be able to, later, at a later time, choose to go to gas if they want.
The water update?
Council, good afternoon. How y'all doing today? So as far as the water update, we're currently on Turkey Creek. We're complete with that. Due to the weather, we didn't get to do the final backfill like we're anticipating this morning. So once the weather dries up, we're hoping Thursday, we don't want to be rutting up anybody's yard, we'll be putting like the final topsoil down, and we'll be moving on over to Honeybee. Honeybee, we're anticipating about a week per cul-de-sac, so what we're going in and what we're doing is we're removing the old infrastructure. Most of it's tied in like a four to two. What I mean by that is a four-inch water main with a two-inch plug on the end, so we're looking at just replacing that, getting that put in. So we're taking about a week in and out on those services, giving the customers efficient notices, letting them know, hey, we're going to be in, we're going to be out. And Northwest Military, we've done our two shorts runs, which is the three hundred and fifty-foot section and the two hundred and forty-foot section. We're contemplating between windmill, Honeybee, Bent Oak, on holding off a little bit longer on that section there, just because the work is finishing up on Northwest Military. They're laying down USAD, and just the problems that we're running into with disposal of the AC main. We dodged a big bullet, we got away, we got a good price on everything disposing of it, but the next go-around, it's not going to be as easy. We would have to set up some disposal sites and things like that, go put some extra preliminary measures on everything. So we may hold off on that a little longer than what we want, but I mean, we're still looking, it's still in the plans for the future. Next slide.
Days of all project at this point is still on hold, pending the federal dollars, so we haven't really done anything on Days of All at this point, but Freeland Turk will be presenting phase one C, street analysis, at the February meeting.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Pete?
So, two questions. Chris, can you give us an update on change orders? Where do we stand on those? Do we have any change orders coming in, and where do we stand on financials?
We've had a couple of change orders, and I'm sorry, should have been prepared to speak to this more. We're at a net increase of twenty-six thousand dollars, I believe.
Sounds right.
Less than thirty thousand dollars in net change orders, and we've done a couple of deducts, and then we've done a couple of adds, so the net change has only been about thirty thousand so far. That's very minimal for a project of this size.
Right, this size, okay. And my next question has to do with communications. When we first started this project, we, D and D came in and talked us about communication that would happen with residents. I just, I wanted a quick status update on how that communication is going, and are we getting any feedback from residents? Negative or positive?
Yeah, we might be able to answer that best. We have learned a lot, especially through wagon trail and as that went through, and we've got a pretty good system of the bimonthly meetings that we have every other Thursday, where we get ground truth, they update their schedule every week. We're in constant communications with Barry, who's the guy on the ground, and so we're doing a good job of getting that update. I think we've done a pretty good job of pushing that forward through our social media, and then we've been working with D and D to provide advance notice and door hangers, et cetera, to the residents. Now, we're getting at least twenty-four, we're pushing forty-eight hours in advance. Mayor is in the current version of that, you know, you're in the throw of that. I don't know how you would grade us, but you know, it's a challenge. It really is a challenge because of the weather and different things, and there's factors, and it's always moving, but we're trying to push that information out, and I think we're doing a good job. And I think that, you know, every resident has been made an opportunity. They have Barry's cellphone number, they have Gerald's number as well, and there's signs up the best we can. So it's not perfect, but we're trying to get the word out.
Okay. Pete, I mean, Conrad, sorry.
Well, financials are one thing. I guess, how long, I mean, it depends upon the street, but how long would the street, or is it supposed to be uncovered, you know, without any, anything on it? Is that a two-week process?
It depends on the length of the street. Generally, though, they try to get it out of mud within two weeks, and when I say out of mud, that means cement stabilized. We are evaluating every street as they get excavated to determine if cement stabilization makes sense. So far, Engate and Wagon Trail were the only two streets where they encountered a lot of rock, and we did not cement stabilize. Since then, we've cement stabilized every street, and we anticipate continuing to do that throughout the rest of the project.
So still about two weeks, I guess.
Two weeks, maybe three, depending on the situation.
Well, I have talked to a few people, and one person, you know, that would let me know how he felt, and I don't have any black eyes or anything, so it's going okay, I think.
Well, so what's the, let's say the Fawn, for example. They started on Fawn on the north side, and they moved towards the ninety-degree curve, and then they went to Northwest Military Highway, and the first thing they did was they took and they removed all the existing asphalt and basically mill and overlay. They milled it all out and they moved it. And then they had to go measure the depths exactly, get engineering surveys, and put little stakes in to determine how and put little stakes in to determine how far they had to, to work it. So, then they went back and then it's a process of digging it up and removing six inch, you know, approximately six more inches of either base and or rock or dirt that was existing there. And that's where you got a lot of the dust complaints. And then, uh, we got those dust complaints almost immediately. We reminded them to put the water truck out, they got it out, but it's a challenge, especially on the weekends associated with that. But after they do that, then they've gotta go cut the curbs and so then it's a different contractor doing the curbs and so it's a process to get the curbs cut. They, they cut the curbs along the streets, but then they gotta go back and then they gotta cut the curbs with a different machine on the driveway approaches as it's going through there. And, um, then they worked through all that, so even in, in Fawn, they haven't actually stabilized it and part of that is weather. Part of it was the curb work, they were scheduled to stabilize it today, it didn't get done. And so, that's the real challenge. So, Chauvinod Drive should've been asphalted a couple of weeks ago, but weather pushed that back, a couple of events pushed that back. It's funny, it's, 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 it's pretty muddy, it's really muddy. It really surprises me based upon the fact that it should be cement stabilized, I don't understand that, but I sent Leonard an, an email, you're copied on it, saying, seems strange to me. But, uh, the fact of the matter is, they've really got into a groove and even though we got a, a weather delay, we've had some weather delays, they've got three crews, they're chomping at the bits to go do, uh, windmill and they're just waiting on that final application on Chauvinod to be able to do that.
Okay. Is, is Bent Oak gonna follow windmill? Uh, because it seems like we're trying to keep all of the big trucks off of the new roads, which makes a whole lot of sense. Okay, so it'll, and then they will start on Saddle Tree or they'll start on Cliffside?
My talking with them, they're gonna do, uh, windmill, Bent Oak and then start Cliffside. I think they're gonna start on the south side, move up north and they'll be exiting off of Saddle Tree.
They'll be exiting off of Saddle Tree.
So, there'll be a circle one way, the other between, uh, Cliffside and Saddle Tree.
Okay.
And then the only other issue that's pending, we just got an answer from Tech Dot on Friday, involved, um, we've, on the east side of Northwest Military Highway, there's the Cliffside, Bent Oak, Windmill, Fawn, Saddle Tree, Chauvinod, there's seven streets, eight counting Windmill, I mean, uh, Engate. And the distance between the end of pavement on Northwest Military Highway and the edge of the right of way is gonna be redone by Tech Dot, but they won't be installing curbs. We asked them to install curbs and we got an answer Friday that they won't install the curbs. I pushed that answer to Chris and Bobby told me that by the end of the week, he'd try to have a confirmation on what options we had available to install the curbs ourself so that when they do that final overlay, that we either have a curb or we come back later and we, we install curbs later. Part of the issue is they, they, Tech Dot have said, two of the intersections, there may be some drainage challenges that we have to account for and they're looking at that. So, more to follow on that, we may come back to you next month and say we need to do a change order, or maybe that's within the acceptable tolerance of being able to do a change order, more to follow.
Okay. As we've gone into the cul-de-sacs, I, I remember some twenty-something years ago, twenty-three, twenty-four years ago, we were talking about the cul-de-sacs, putting down new asphalt, uh, and we were looping those. I'm assuming that, uh, as we're going back in, Johnny, that we are confirming that everything is adequately looped in all the cul-de-sacs that we are addressing right now?
Yes, sir, that'll be the next, uh, we're, we're doing that, but we're also planning for future to upgrading some of the loops as well, uh, just to allow for the water to flow through the pipes a little better. Most of it's cast iron, it, that does cause a drag on your water line, which does allow for less gallons per minute to flow through the actual meter itself, so we are forecasting and planning that for the future as well.
Okay.
Just to clarify.
Yeah.
I believe you asked whether we're looping the cul-de-sacs and I believe the answer's no. Okay. The cul-de-sacs-
Are they looped right now or not?
What's that?
Are they looped now?
No, they're not.
Okay.
And so, the cul-de-sacs typically, you have a water main that goes on one side or the other and then they, then they spider web from that end through the different, um, circular and they go straight across the road in numerous places, you know, as a spider. So, those lines, as they leak, cause deterioration of the road in the cul-de-sac to a large degree, et cetera. And the fact that most of the, most all of the cul-de-sacs have a fire hydrant that's not at the end of the cul-de-sac. What we're going to be doing is putting a fire hydrant at the end of each cul-de-sac so that can be blown out and then, and then we're reworking the service lines so that they're not across in the middle of this cul-de-sac in the, in the driveway. They're either going to originate from the far side and then loop through, or they're gonna originate from the near side before the cul-de-sac so that they go into the service lines and we're not degrading that portion there. And so, um, there may be one that's been looped, I can't remember whether we looped Arrowhead or not. That was, that was, we did that a year and a half ago or something like that, but I don't believe there were looping these in terms-
No, the cul-de-sac is not actually looped. The mains that do run up to it are looped, but the cul-de-sac itself is a dead end and the reason we're moving it to the end, the fire hydrant to the actual, is so it does get a full flush, so we're not having stagnant, stagnant water between there, we're getting adequate flush and allowing for a better position for firefighting as well. The fire trucks can actually loop around, hook up and it's in a little better position for that situation there.
Okay. And, and as we're coming around to Cliffside, um, we had a looping problem there. Did we get that resolved or, or is that an un- irresolvable issue?
Okay, now, I think Johnny's talking about in the cul- in the alley behind Cliffside as it goes south and it services those, um, houses on there. And I know we had some dead ends there, we did a lot of work on those, we did a lot of improvements and they may be before your time. Do you, do you recall, to be put on the spot, or we need to follow up tomorrow and provide an answer?
I'd like to follow up with a better answer. So, are, are you saying, there's several parts on, since I've been here, that, um, I've, I've been talking to you about on Cliffside. Like, s- specific areas would be kinda where the cul- where the main does cut on Cliffside to an alleyway. Another specific part is kind of where Cliffside does an actual bend, there's the, the walkway to get down to the, to the, to the hiking bike trail down there. Um, they're having some issues in that area specifically and we're assuming that specific area is being affected just due to the fact that the top of the earth, the ground there is, you know, they're in a, they're in a pretty low spot, they're sagging and, um, potentially running the risk of just because the weight of the water's pushing down on all those services, some, yeah, it, it's a very high pressured area, so most residents are having, you know, some, not most, but some are having pressures, well, my, my pressure's not high enough, you know, I wanna be able to irrigate and wash a load of laundry, take a shower and do everything. Well, I don't have enough water for that. Well, in their situation, they have too much, so it's, it's a, a sit- that's a situational kinda thing where they would have to put a pressure regulator to allow for less, less water to flow through there, but that's just the hydraulics of the water pushing against that actual meter. So, there's several little areas within there, so if I can get you a better answer from all, that'd be great.
Just to clarify, if you look at the map right here, that's the alley basically that goes through here and there's an alley that extends from Fawn, basically. I guess it's right here, there's an alley that goes this way. Those lines went and they dead ended here and they were, they spidered out here, there's significant improvement under Brandon Peterson's reign here, where he did some improvements here. I can't remember whether he then extended it out to where it's a loop or what, what he did, but we made significant pro- uh, progress here. Johnny, I'd ask you to talk to Frank and Jesse, let's get a, a B-Cad map where we take and we highlight and we kinda show them, we'll, we'll scan it and send it to you and you can see.
Yes, perfect.
Okay. Very good, uh, anybody else?
I have a question. This isn't the biggest of deals, but it, it's, it's a problem, there's a potholes and I've discussed it, the city manager and I have discussed it as of Friday and, uh, we've had a reply back from Tech Dot, but, and there's a couple only that I'm aware, because that's, that's where I drive and one's at the end of Longbow is, uh, uh, if you approach Military, the southwest corner, uh, there's, there's, uh, like a two or three inch, it's not a real big pothole, but when you turn right, it takes that back tire and puts you over into the middle lane, which is beginning to narrow at that point. I know they tried to fill it, I guess, with that famous topsoil that they used somewhere else and that didn't work, it, but something, I mean, that really is, it's not that big, but it is a dangerous thing. And now that, uh, what is it, Broken Bow has the water, we're directing the, the traffic down to Longbow to get onto Military and, and it's, somebody would just put a rock in it and they, Tech Dot said, well, we put up our barrels, there are no barrels there. Well, there are two. One says, uh, sidewalk doesn't work, the other one says, don't be on the sidewalk, there's no barrel there for that area, it's been that way for a long time. They've seen me out there taking pictures of it and I told them there's a hole there, they didn't, it was okay. The other one is the right turn lane off of De Zavala onto Northwest Military. I know people move the, the barricades, the trucks, the big pickups come over and kinda nudge them over and make that a turn lane. Well, it's really, it's really bad. I mean, for the big trucks, they're probably okay, but for regular cars, there was, there was at least three that I went through taking somebody home the other day that were really, and I've got an SUV mid-size, it's, you know, neither big nor little, uh, and that's bad. I mean, there's gotta be, another, it's gotta be some liability, but there's gotta be some responsibility. I mean, along with road construction, do you check barrels at the end of the day and put them back? Sometimes they've left, uh, uh, one of their equip- pieces of equipment there, uh, but it's, most of the time, it's, it's not covered and, and that's really bad. I don't know if it's a weight, but, you know, that's construction. Um, I'm, I'm just really concerned about it, that, you know, they say, well, they moved the barrels, you know, they do and I've honked at people and, and, uh, gotten out and moved barrels, barrels back, uh, and, you know, there's, there's, I'm just, you know, maybe I'm naive, but they need to have some responsibility to check it. I know it takes time out of the day to check a barrel, but it's a problem.
Yes, ma'am. Um, I'll get that addressed tomorrow. As far as the Longbow, I did realize that's a day. I pulled into Longbow, I did pull into Longbow today and my truck did slide out pretty far into the road, so I'll get both of those problems addressed tomorrow.
It doesn't look like it's much, but, but it's, it's a problem. I mean, it's dangerous, so.
Most definitely.
I also sent a, um, Curtis initially sent us an email and I sent an email on Broken Bow and I went and looked at some of the cars exiting Broken Bow and there is a pothole that is really big that's covered by water and, and so I pointed that out. We got feedback from the project manager that they will fix, you know, they'll do everything they can to fix it tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make this quick. So, a quick question on the water system, one of the projects that we've had on the books and I don't know where, I'll just, quick update on where we are, to map the system and map where all the valves are, where are we on that?
Yeah, that's actually beyond the scope of this agenda item, the update.
Yeah, we're, we're working, um, we're working that.
Okay. Okay. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Brings us to item eight point three, discussion action, proposed city engineer task order analyzing city hall parking options in vicinity of city hall.
Hey, so, um, after the last event, which was very, very successful, and we had cars parked on Northwest Military Highway across from Northwest Military in our overflow on De Zavala, on Elm Springs, on Bike Way, um, you know, looking at the current De Zav- uh, Northwest Military Highway project, you're not gonna have those lanes closed off where you can kinda park, even if it's not designated parking. When we do De Zavala, we are not gonna, the current plan has a si- raised sidewalk, only some trucks will be able to hoof it over to that sidewalk and park in the, uh, in a no man's land. So, kinda put our heads together and said, okay, what, what is feasible? What, what are we going to actually do? Because, you know, we can always have an offsite, we can shuttle people back and forth and do that, but, you know, every time I've ever done that, whether it's going to church or whether it's going to other events, it's just problematic, it's, you're just not gonna get that. So, we know we have an overflow parking behind city hall that we've used over and over again. There was a tree survey done, uh, KFW at the time provided a, um, a number of slots, maybe it's fifty-five, and we, we generally use that. We know that we have De Zavala that we're currently using and we ought to, you know, the thought was, take a look at the current plans, what can you do to adjust that sidewalk? So, you still have a sidewalk, but it's not right there at the edge of curve and we're really talking about from the Via Bus Stop to the new culvert that we're going to have and then maybe running that sidewalk where the existing municipal track sidewalk is, uh, trail is. So, so, um, then we've got that lot across the street, which we potentially could use for parking. So, what we did is we, we contacted Chris, we had a meeting, we said, hey, look, why don't you put together a task order proposal to take a look at these three sites and see what you can do to maximize, uh, parking and see what our adjustments can be. I met with Bear Met nine one one, as well as the chairman of the board, as well as the executive director. We expressed interest in, um, possibly purchasing that property that's, um, just adjacent to the entrance into, into Saddle Creek, Saddle Tree Court, City Hall. And I pretty much got, uh, you know, we want to hold that property and, uh, at least for the near term. I got a, uh, a remark at the end that says, well, you can always present something to the board and of course, we'll consider it. I know if we presented it, I know how it would be considered, it would be unfavorable, but what I did do is talk to Chris about, um, what if we went in there, did a tree survey? We knew where the heritage trees were, they're interested, uh, Bear Met nine one one in doing two things. One, having, um, their headquarters in their building kind of obscured by vegetation and the overgrowth that exists on that lot does a pretty good job. And the other thing is they wanted some ability to expand towards the highway if they ever wanted to in the, in the future for some reason. Anyway, so, what we thought was, well, maybe there's a case that we can make, that we identify where the major trees are. We've, we've come up with a proposal to replat that property that gives them a pretty significant slice, but then allows us to have some parking. But since we don't even know what that is, we thought, well, let's have Chris survey it, take a look, give it a proposal. I did get permission from Brett to be able to survey it, just so you know, so you don't get kicked off. Um, it's not our property. But I'm not optimistic that in the near term, we're going to have a solution involving that property. But if we have an idea conceptually of what could happen, then at least we'd be in position later to do it. While he's doing this parking analysis, we've included it. So, the bottom line is that we have a proposal from Collier Engineering to do the, uh, parking analysis of those four areas and then present options to city council. And, uh, and that cost is eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And the majority of that cost, a big part of that is actually the survey. Chris can talk, he did the details of, associated with that, but we're asking for approval of that so we get some planning documents, um, presented.
Okay. Uh, before I entertain a motion, I'm gonna, uh, ask if anybody has any questions they'd like to extend to Chris at this time? Okay. If there are questions for Chris, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed city engineer task order analyzing city hall parking options in the vicinity of city hall. Do we have a motion?
A small move.
We have a motion from Maggie? Do we have a second? We have a second, Conrad, we're now open for discussion. There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Actually, you get, you do get to vote. Aye, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, the motion carries four oh. My apologies.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Item eight four, discussion, uh, presentation discussion, twenty twenty-three annual crime report. Chief?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Um, I know we're only about a third of the way through for tonight, so I'll try to be, keep this quick. I'll try to use my clicker, Curtis can fix me if we're not. Um, your case, your package should have the staff summary, pretty much outlines a lot of the details and so forth that we're gonna talk about. And, uh, you also have the, uh, monthly activity report for December that, uh, kinda highlights the year-end activity in comparisons since, uh, twenty nineteen. So, let's see if this'll work. Start off with our organizational chart, it's pretty much stayed the same year to year, except for this year. We, uh, made a change that we'll talk about a little bit, um, that includes my patrol shifts. You'll see, generally, traditionally, we had four shifts down there because- You'll see generally, traditionally, we had four shifts down there because there are in twelve hour shifts. We changed that this year. We went to eight and a half hour overlapping shifts and, uh, so those, that reduces us down to three shifts total. Um, we are one officer short currently of our fulfillment for Manning and, uh, we have testing in progress that, uh, will be beginning here in a few weeks. Um, we also changed as I believe it was the September timeframe, we made one little edit from the packets that you received on our reserve officers that's listed over there because we actually changed that in September to reserve part-time officers or cadets based on the council's approval. All right, here's the breakdown from twenty twenty-three to twenty eighteen. Um, you'll see this year we had more calls for service, um, than we have in the past, which is indicated in, uh, the green. We're actually up about a hundred exactly overall, and that's the total calls for service. That includes our criminal and non-criminal. Um, our non-criminal calls, uh, were up about just not quite two hundred and those are your alarm calls, the routine stuff that they do in day in, day out throughout the year. The biggest highlight this year is the criminal calls. These are major, or not are major, but these are all our criminal offenses that, uh, the officers respond to, take reports on and so forth. Um, so the past couple of years, we've been at two fifty at the end of the year and this year we actually dropped it by ninety-two. So we're at a hundred and fifty-eight and, uh, in total, that's a thirty-six point eight percent reduction in criminal calls for this year. Um, has generally with Chauvin Oak Park, these numbers are extremely low. You want to go in and compare things to San Antonio, you're talking about one point four million just in emergency calls alone. Um, so, uh, whether it was two fifty or one fifty-eight, you know, they're all very, 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 very low numbers for a, for a year for a police department to be responding to within their community. We always hope to keep that number down to zero. However, that's not a realistic option. Um, so we'll, we figure that that number will kind of vary a little bit. Um, I'm hope that some of the things we talked about tonight will kind of show what may have reduced that number the way it is. So we talked about our non-criminal calls. Uh, this year we had twenty-four hundred and fifty-two's compared to twenty-two sixty last year. Um, that number is down though from twenty eighteen, which was twenty-five forty-seven. These are generally not calls that weak control. These are your nine one ones, like we talked about, your accidents, um, that we respond to, our information calls, all kinds of general different call types. This is a little bit of a breakdown with some of these, uh, non-criminal calls, major accidents, minor accidents. Um, you can kind of see those numbers listed there. I've highlighted two in yellow because there's a very dramatic difference between the two. And that's basically because in November twenty twenty-two, um, our former co-compliance officer left. So we restructured in twenty twenty-three, the way we handle some of our co-compliance violations and reorganized those and found a better tracking method by making reports for them so we could track them better within our system and connect follow-ups and so forth. So that's why you see, uh, a large number of those city ordinance violation cases increased from forty-two in twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. And in the animal calls, that's because we transitioned a lot of your animal calls that traditionally they were responding to. Um, animals running at large and so forth, those are actually city ordinance violations. They drop down into that other category. Uh, throughout the rest of these numbers, they vary a little bit, um, but nothing dramatic or trust, uh, tra, uh, drastic as the other two that we just kind of highlighted. These are our criminal offenses we talked about. Hundred and fifty-eight this year, or, um, in twenty twenty-three, two hundred and fifty in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-one. And then we had changed our report writing system, uh, report management system to coincide better with NIBR's and TIBR's, which is our national, uh, incident database and our Texas incident reporting database. Um, so I feel pretty confident in those numbers that came across those, uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. And like I said, we had a, a pretty good drop last year. So we talked about our criminal offenses. Um, this is just a little bit of a breakdown from the, uh, main sheet of where we got there. Um, we'll show a little bit here later where some of our increases and decreases really came. For the most part, there wasn't a huge chain, change on some of these, um, so we didn't put a comparison table in there. Officer initiated activity. This is basically just what the off, patrol officer goes out there and does, um, when he's out there on patrol, some of those calls, traffic stop results in a outside agency arrest warrant. Um, they've come across a DWI, DUI, um, driving while intoxicated or a minor who's driving under intoxication, um, or, and those numbers pretty much stayed the same at twenty, uh, compared to last year or the previous year. So we're still in good standing there. Um, our narcotics violations and weapons violations, they went down this past year as compared to the previous year. Um, some of that, you know, it's just happenstance. Uh, our traffic proactivity increased, um, last year compared to previous years. Just, uh, we didn't come across those kind of items on traffic stops and so forth. So, uh, you'll see a lot of our officer activity, our citizen policing contacts, crime prevention activities, house and business checks, traffic contacts and our traffic violations there. This is our crime map. Historically, we kind of outline and number some of these, um, locations where these offenses occur. So like our theft offenses, theft of motor vehicles, theft of mail, burglary of vehicles, burglary of buildings, burglary of habitations and robberies. Um, the ones that we really, 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 really want to prevent happening within our city is the burglary of habitation and robberies. And so we had zero last year all alone. Um, burglary of motor vehicles, we had twenty-five this year and looking back on our report, I believe we had thirty-five last year. And if you'll remember, we had a spurt there with about nine or ten, so back in November, I believe it was. So if we wouldn't have had those, we'd drastically reduce those vehicle burglaries. Theft of males, um, I believe broke out in, uh, in about half. We had three this year or in twenty twenty-three with six the year previous. And I'll go back to that real quick. You can see on that map too. If Curtis can send me back. You can see on that map too, some of our highlighted areas of where this activity occurs is going to be up here in the business districts along sixteen oh four. And, uh, some of our frequent flyers in those areas and so forth. We, we really believe that, uh, with one of the businesses up in this area, they've increased their, uh, video surveillance systems out in their parking lot. So that helps us with prosecution and locating these individuals and filing criminal charges against them and getting our convictions. So, uh, our convenience stores are actually been pretty low. Uh, if you look at both of those down here in that area and then up here in this area. So we have, um, some, uh, some strange ones that occurred up here in, uh, off Pond Hill. Um, those were actually more so a result of one incident, um, that we had with a stolen vehicle up there and some kids had gotten into there, stole the vehicle, were going to ride some cars, um, stole some property out of them and so forth. But we did, uh, make some arrests on that and recovered the vehicle as well. And then we have the sporadic's vehicle burglaries around here in the neighborhoods and then on Chauvin Oak Creek area, in the states area down there. Um, we did have, see a large decrease in the number of firearms that were stolen out of these vehicle burglaries. Um, so I want to hopefully attribute that to the education that we've been putting out with our weekly crime blotters, um, in our newsletters where we've kind of harped on that a little bit about securing those items. They still unfortunately occur on occasion, but, uh, those numbers dropped considerably. Some of our twenty twenty-three notable accomplishments, I just kind of wanted to highlight, maybe. Curtis, can you give me a hand? So we had two officers that completed their FBI lead, lead a trilogy award and, uh, what that is, is, uh, a law enforcement leadership class consists of three classes that's taught by the FBI itself, um, throughout the state. And once you complete all three classes, you get your trilogy award. We're fortunate that, uh, uh, this past year, Captain Kelly received his. I'd received mine in twenty seventeen. So once the entire command staff of a police department receives that tril, their trilogy awards individually, the entire agency can get a trilogy award itself. Um, our staff also completed thirty-four hundred hours of T-CO reported training hours. That's all of our classroom training, our leadership training and all that combined. Curtis? We had one officer that completed their FAA small UAS rule, part one oh seven certification. You're probably like, what is that? That is basically, uh, the federal, um, the Fed's drone, um, pilot certification. Uh, we actually made some connections with some of our federal partners and we were able to get an officer into that class for free, where normally it costs several thousand dollars. So we're pretty fortunate on that. Um, we don't have a drone program to speak up for the department. However, I have a pair of officers that have their own personal drones that we utilize on major crime scenes and for the benefit of the city with different aspects and so forth. Um, we had two officers that were recognized by Mothers Against Struck drivers last year. Uh, we had one officer obtain their, uh, attended the Texas Municipal League's, uh, Leadership Academy and he attained his Leadership Fellow. Uh, we also began our, uh, medical disposal program, um, that was budgeted last year with the, uh, Dropbox out here. Uh, we initiated our safe exchange zone program and I believe there should be one more, Curtis. And we also initiated the Autism Special Needs Awareness Program, um, this past April. So we, uh, we accomplished some pretty good stuff, so we hope to keep it going, hope to keep these numbers down and hope to keep the community safe.
Thank you very much. Do y'all have any questions or comments, concerns?
I do. Chief.
Yes, sir.
Recently, we've seen a lot of crime coming from San Antonio into Chauvin Oak Park. How are we keeping our, how are we, is there any way to control that or?
Well, the criminals don't know boundaries. So they don't know where Chauvin Oak Park begins, where San Antonio ends and so forth. So, um, keeping the officers on the streets, one of the things that we did, I talked about a little bit, was we changed shifts from twelve to eight and a half. We actually now have an overlap. So traditionally where all the officers would come and congregate at the office in order to begin their shifts and end their shifts, now their officers are staying on the road. With the eight and a half hour shifts, they work a forty-two hour work week, forty-two point five hour work week. Even though it's increased over forty, they're still more refreshed because they're getting more time off to rest at the end of the day versus working a twelve. Sometimes these twelve hour days, I've seen them turn into twenty-four hour days on major things that happen traditionally at the end of your shift. And so, uh, uh, by keeping those officers refreshed and so forth and out on the streets itself, I believe made a huge presence with that, so.
And a mother comment is I think y'all have done an exceptional job and thank y'all for what y'all do.
Thank you.
Conrad?
Well, thank y'all for your work. Uh, thank you for saving us a little bit of money with the training. Thank you for being aware and taking the autism training and stuff like that that can be very important at certain times.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you very much. You run a great department. Keep up the great work.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Item eight point five, public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive comments from the members of the public regarding proposed zoning ordinance, amending chapter six, building and building regulation and chapter thirty-six zoning to remove building official appeals from Board of Adjustments Authority and establish a construction board of appeals. Bill, it is seven thirty-five.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. So this item originally, uh, came from the city attorney, but this actual item was, uh, worked with planning zoning in November and December. So it's been through the process. Um, this ordinance in brief, you can go and do next slide, reestablishes the construction board of appeals. This was abolished by our city ordinance in twenty nineteen. We also, I should point out, the city has no record that this board has ever convened. But it came from our city attorneys originally pointing out that the, we had given construction appeals authority to the Board of Adjustment. They had no legal ability to hold those. So if a appeal did come in and we had to follow ordinance, oops, we're kind of in a jam here. So this is a, we, we had known about this for a while. We're finally getting around to it. It's a part of cleanup ordinances, making them more sound. So we pre-established construction board of appeals, which the city once had, but instead of having us professionals as it was back in pre-twenty nineteen, the board is a co-appointment and co-termed with the Board of Adjustment. That's that same way we did the junk vehicle board of appeals and the structure, unsafe structure abatement ordinance did the same thing. Um, so there's a lot more background in your packet and the purposes of keeping the meeting nice and short. I won't cover that, but happy to answer any questions in the actual agenda item.
Okay. Uh, there being no citizens, questions, concerns or comments, it is now seven thirty-six, which brings us to item eight point six, discussion action ordinance O twenty twenty-four zero zero one, amending chapter six, building and building regulations and chapter thirty-six zoning to remove building official appeals from the Board of Adjustments Authority and reestablish a construction board of adjustment appeals. This is the first reading. Uh, Curtis, do you have anything else that you'd like to bring to us before I'll entertain a motion?
Uh, nothing else, Dan.
Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance O twenty twenty-four zero zero one. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Buddy has made a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Pete is second in the motion. We are now open for discussion. Conrad?
This, uh, board of appeals, does it have to have different people on it than serve on other boards?
No. Um, you can kind of think of, like with, you just had the crime prevention, uh, board meeting. You were the same individuals, but you were wearing different hats and you were directors instead of council members. A similar sort of thing. Instead of actually the true authority, uh, to the Board of Adjustment, instead they have to wear different hats to convene as the construction board of appeals, but it is much more convenient for a small city like us, instead of having the ordinance previously would require an engineer, a licensed electrician to be on it, a licensed plumber, and it meets so infrequently. And to be honest, we are lucky, we have a very good Board of Adjustment and they take, uh, they hear things with a lot of, uh, consideration and seriousness, so.
The next question then is, if we go down the line and this gets in court or whatever, um, does it, is it more helpful to have different people on this board?
Is what?
Is it more helpful to have those engineers and electricians and that on the board?
I can't speak to, uh, you know, the, how I would make legal strength or appeals or anything, but there is no requirement in state law that it has to be, um, licensed professionals. So we don't have to worry about that. There's nothing in state law that says it has to be that way.
Okay. Pete?
So I, I think Conrad's question's a good question. It has to do with competency of the board, right? Whenever you have decisions to be made, you want a competent board that can make those decisions. Would the board be allowed to bring in expertise in if they needed that expertise for a hearing?
No. And, and I think that that goes to Bill's.
Well, I think that's the city's role. So essentially, every, uh, problem or permit approval or denial and then appeal is then going to be a slightly different situation, but it would depend upon what the appeal was based upon the decision. The city obviously would, um, be working with the building inspector. There may be a point where we have a disagreement with the city. We haven't had that in the past, but let's assume that we've coordinated a permit and the, the building inspector and the city staff collaborate and we say, that's not a permitted use or we need to have this, we deny this permit. There would be good justification for that, associated with that, that if we denied it and that was appealed to the construction board of appeal, then there would be a hearing, um, laid on and then the city, from that standpoint, if it was electrical, would bring in electrical subject matter experts and we would represent ourselves saying, and it would be, you know, the building inspector, based upon his expertise, but we may also bring in other electricians or other case studies or something like that would say, this is the reason why we have this. And so the applicant for the appeal would say, well, though I disagree and it might be that they bring a subject matter expert, then I don't really think you need an electrician per se on there. What you need is someone that can take a look at. The arguments made for and arguments made against weigh those, assess them and then make a determination based upon the proponents of evidence.
Pete?
So to summarize, what you're looking for is a board that could provide good judgment versus technical expertise. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Sounds like the Board of Adjustments. Any other questions or comments? There are no further questions or comments. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance O twenty twenty-four zero zero one, amending chapter six, building and building regulations and chapter thirty-six zoning to remove building official appeals from Board of Adjustments Authority and reestablish a construction board of appeals. This is a first reading. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four oh. Item eight point seven, public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive con- Item eight point seven, public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive comments from members of the public regarding proposed zoning ordinance amending Chapter Thirty-Six Zoning. Article six, Roman number six tables to, uh, to establishing the procedures. Of zoning building setbacks over platted building setback lines if platted building setback lines are more restrictive. Uh, it is now seven forty-two. Uh, Curtis, you want to tell us why we're here to hear about this and see if any questions come from the public?
Absolutely, Mayor. I won't go into the whole history behind this. Uh, it's in your packet. I will say that this came from a recent land transaction, uh, in the fall. And we had a title company that insisted on ensuring the platted setbacks on an old plat from nineteen seventy-nine. That had, that originally came from a, before the city was formed, a nineteen forty-eight deed. You have a whole history in there. But they refused to accept a zoning verification letter from the city, which is typically when developers, realtors, builders, anybody who wants to know what are the zoning rules that are going to be enforced to my property for permitting. From the city's perspective, if you come to us for anything, but they, that wasn't good enough for them. So it was suggested by our attorneys that we add a statement to ordinance. You can go and do next slide. And this sentence, you find it's in several places throughout the ordinance, but it reads just this. Plated building setbacks for lots that exceed the requirements of this chapter, the zoning chapter. Where the building setback lines for lots have been established by plat through the city zoning authority. So think a planning zoning commission just reviewed a, a plat. It was on your consent agenda. So it came through the city zoning authority and exceed the requirements of this chapter, so think the rules today. The zoning building setbacks established by this chapter today, take a precedence and apply. You can go and do next slide. This proposal establishes again that setbacks today take precedence over previously platted setbacks approved by the city zoning authority. It does not supersede or nullify private setbacks from a deed restriction or other private restriction. Any existing deed restrictions would continue to apply regardless of the proposed amendment and the city, as our attorneys were clear on us and reminding us, cannot enforce private deed restrictions anyways. So again, this proposal only triggers if those are previous plated building setbacks are more restrictive than the zoning ordinances for, um, building setbacks. So it's very narrow in its scope. Um, and that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Are there any citizens with questions, concerns, or comments? There being no citizen questions, concerns, or comments, it is now seven forty-four and we're proceeding to item eight point eight. Discussion Action Ordinance O two thousand twenty-four zero zero two, amending Chapter Thirty-Six Zoning. Article, uh, Article Roman numeral six tables. To establish the precedence of zoning building setbacks over platted building setback lines. If platted building setback lines are more restrictive, this is a first reading. Curtis, do you have anything else you'd like to add at this time?
I'll just add to this ordinance, just like the previous one, went through the process, planning and zoning reviewed it on November first meeting, they had a public hearing. Um, and it was tabled and they had a lot of consultation with the city attorney and that, so I can guarantee you the P and Z did a lot of, uh, review of this. But on December sixth, language in front of you is what they recommended.
Okay.
Emphasize that.
Very good. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance O two thousand twenty-four zero zero two.
So moved.
We have a motion from Pete. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Maggie. We're now open for discussion. Pete?
So my question is to Clarissa. Clarissa, are there any risks associated with this? I, I've kind of looked at this on both sides and I can't see any risk, but are there? Did, did you see it? So, so my question is, as I, as I look at this proposal, my question is, is would we put ourselves in any risk to do something like this? And what are the potential risks?
Good question, but no, that not only because it only applies, right, just to the city pieces. No enforcement or anything with any other private setbacks or anything. This is just to amend it for building setbacks that are not. Um, enforced by private deeds or anything else. So no, it doesn't, it should not. It's actually going to be in line with city, excuse me, with state law too.
Okay. Okay. If there are no other questions, comments, or concerns, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries four oh. Thank you very much, Curtis. Item. Eight point nine, Discussion Action Ordinance O two thousand twenty-three zero two-one, updating the City of Chavano Park fee schedule. For, to reauthorize permit fees, increase the water debt service fee. Institute various water fees and minimize and, uh, minor amendments. Bill?
Yeah, um, Steph's done a lot of work on this. Curtis has done the, uh, the majority part on, uh, general fees and the, the structure of this. I'll let him summarize that. We've done a lot of work in the Water Advisory Committee and we've had a couple turns on that. Johnny and I will be able to talk about that as well, so I'll turn it over to Curtis for you.
Yes, thank you, Council. There's a lot of moving, uh, I presented this back in November before the holidays. There's a lot of moving parts of this. Uh, only reviewed tonight, the changes made from what was approved in November. There's five of them and I'm just going to highlight three of them. And then we're going to have, um, Johnny come up and talk just real briefly so you can see what the WAC recommended. And what you see in the ordinance is in front of you is what WAC recommended, so it's pretty simple. Five main changes, uh, the three of them I'm going to point out, again, the WAC reviewed, the recommended water amendments, debt service fee, we'll cover that. The zoning Board of Adjustment Fees Reviews, that was something Council directed us in November to look at. And also we reviewed residential building permits. Next slide. So I'll start off here with the Board of Adjustment Fees. Um, again, Council asked us to take a look at this, so we took the two thousand twenty-three most recent hearings. And we found, we totaled up the staff cost, which we always assume the city fifty dollars for staff. As a nice, simple way to account for bills times my time, permit clerk's time, it's rough accounting. Then legal, that's the actual dollar amounts the city was billed, and then paper notices, San Antonio Express News, they actually charged us. So the average charge was one thousand two hundred eighty-two dollars for those meetings. You can see a big discrepancy when. You have one that's relatively simple, uh, of consideration, one which is much more legally complex, um, attorneys involved from both parties and whatnot. So we are proposing in this, in your ordinance, eight hundred dollars. That is an increase from three hundred fifty to eight hundred, which is a significant increase. It does not cover the full cost, but staff views that as significant, helps recompensate while not being overly burdensome. Again, to potentially resident has a very valid, simple variance request seeking relief. Next slide. On residential building permits. The last time the city looked at those was back in twenty nineteen. That's when we moved from. Uh, valuation based permitting to square footage based permitting. Since twenty nineteen, obviously we had the increasing inflation costs, payroll, equipment, software between November and, um, January here. We didn't have time to look at all the commercial building permits, every electrician, HVAC and, or they all, but we were able to do the residential. Here's our proposal. So the hundred dollar plan review fee has not been changed in many, many years. We propose moving it to a hundred and fifty. We propose, that was a flat fee for every single residential building permit you can think of, everything from a fence to a, a four million dollar home. We propose adding a fifteen percent of the permit cost for a new residential build. There was fifteen in the city last year. On new residences, which is a square footage, we move proposing from one point two three per square foot to one point four. Same thing with accessory buildings, same thing with additions. Remodels has always been a lower, we put that on a lower level because you're renovating an existing space. That's only up by ten cents, you can see there. And we added a new carve out of portable buildings of a flat a hundred dollar fee. And a way to kind of protect it from these increasing fees, but also those are very simple, um, projects typically, a shed. Two hundred, you're talking about two hundred square foot building made of light plywood, metal, something like that. That typically is going to lower it from, if you had two hundred square foot, base square footage, be two hundred forty-six dollar permit. Now it's, this proposing moving to a hundred, so a significant cost decrease for residents. And next slide. I'll do this, the water debt service fee. Um, there is no change from what we presented last in November, but I'll just remind you that it was in the twenty-third town plan. It was showed that the debt service fee was not covering the annual debt service. And the town plan recommended that annual reviews be done of the debt service and that it be increased or lowered, whatever is needed to ensure the debt costs are covered by the water fund. On the, we took this to WAC between the last meeting on December eleventh and they recommended approval with increase the water debt service fee by three dollars and eighteen cents to twenty-five seventy-six. Which in essence means that every customer will pay thirty-eight dollars and sixteen cents per extra per year on their water bill for debt service.
And that's the same thing we briefed you in November. That's not changed. That's just been validated and recommended by the WAC. Same thing.
And Johnny?
So, uh, continuing with what we spoke to, spoke about in November, um, one of the main ones was our long bor, bor fee. Uh, we were proposing back, uh, November, the city covers some of the shared costs with the residents. Uh, the WAC committee did recommend if it's a long bor fee and the resident is looking to upgrade their service and they're going to be crossing a. Brand new road or somewhat of a really good road, uh, depending on the, the PS, the, the payment index. Uh, there, that the customer does pay the full price, which would, they would have to pay the, the full amount, which it was recommended by Council and took it to the WAC and. They went ahead and approved that. They, they thought it was a great idea to, um, uh, go through and have the resident pay if they are. Wanting a, a bigger service for some form or fashion. Also the non-payments, some of these went up, some of them went down. Uh, most of them didn't really go up. Most of them, some went down, some stayed the same. So, uh, we actually, for the non-payment, we're, we came in November, it was sixty dollars a month, uh, sixty dollars for that payment fee. And, uh, we're, the WAC committee is recommending a twenty-five dollar fee. And so that, that went down substantially, which is good for the resident. Um, and we're not here to make money. We're here just to help residents and cover the cost for our operators having to come in and, and take care of the problem at hand. Uh, for the, uh, water meter, for the two and a half inch water meter fee, um, that's more for contractors, uh, people running out like Dan Williams, D and D. Currently, there'd be, it was just a flat sixty dollar fee. What we're recommending is the sixty dollar month fee, the fifty dollar, um, uh, permitting fee. A, uh, a five dollar technology fee and actually a deposit, so that way if we do, if it does get damaged in some form or fashion, those meters are kind of costly. We have that money to go ahead and replace that meter at any point in time. Uh, the four inch, uh, uh, service fee, the only four inch line that we currently, the city does own, is out here at the pavilion. And our city is basically built out pretty close to, to where we can't really get anything that's going to require. Such a big meter like a, a four inch water meter. Four inch water meter would be like a Lowe's, a Home Depot, even like a very high volume demand, so we don't see. The city growing s, at, at any, anytime soon to that size, so we recommend just taking off the four inch service fee at, at that point in time. Um, also, like I said, some things did come off, which were the, uh, meter lids and boxes. Spoke with several cities our size and, um, typically there's just a cost of doing business. Um, and cities that are kind of run the same way we're run. So, um, we are recommending the only thing to charge right now is instead of a hundred and twenty-five dollars for the cellular meter. Uh, which is the device that we use to, um, communicate with our billing. If we, if that does get damaged in any form or fashion, uh, having the resident pay the hundred and fifty dollar fee, but as far as for the box and lids. It's just the cost of doing business. If they do get damaged, we'll go out, we'll replace it and not charge the resident anything on that one. Um, on the, uh, false emergency line locates, uh, those do come in, not going to say all the time, but they do come in. And at times they come in at random times, maybe in the middle of the night when the resident, when the contractor is at home. So in November, we proposed thirty dollars an hour, the two, uh, for a two hour minimum. And, uh, the WAC committee made the recommendation to bring it back to you guys that they thought that was a good price for, you know, the service, the, the charges to. Charge the, the contractors mostly is going to be doing that work there. And, uh, one of the big ones is damage to Chavano Park's water utility infrastructure. Uh, that's going to, that's in there just to protect us as a, as a, as an entity, as a business, as, as. And most people that are going to damage this, their infrastructure, they're going to be a contractor, kind of like perfect scenario is Dan Williams on Northwest Military Highway. Um, backing into our fire hydrant, our crews having to work in, on an emergency, get dispatched out. Take away from what they were doing on Turkey Creek and having to dispatch these guys out to get this job done. Um, we're recommending, uh, to charge them, uh, double the, double the, the employees' rates. Um, also, um, uh, the, the fringe benefits and equipment costs. And also, uh, five hour minimum, because anytime that we do get into an emergency, we do have to call for a line locate because we don't want to damage. Another opposing utility down that's, that's underground, so. There is some downtime typically if it's a gas company. Luckily, we're CPS, they could be on this side of San Antonio and fighting rush hour traffic to get to us. So our guys could be sitting around for upwards to two, three hours. And that's something that the, that the city's eating that cost at, at that point in time, just waiting for those actual locates to come in. So we're recommending a five hour minimum charge, because it's going to be the two hours, three hours that we're waiting, plus the. Three or four hours that we actually does take us to actually make that, uh, that repair and also a two hundred and, uh, also charging up for water, water loss. Which would be a minimum of two hundred and fifty thousand gallons. Um, and that's pretty standard when it comes to billing a contractor for any kind of major damages to water lines in our infrastructure. Like I said, this is a big one and it's just to allow us to reclaim any losses that we do encounter when we do hit somebody, because. When the shoe's on the other foot and we do hit somebody else's lines, it does cost us a pretty penny, so. We just like to stay and protect our city as much as we can with, uh, infrastructure.
Okay, thank you, Johnny. Bill, do you have anything to add before we entertain a motion?
I, I think one of the slides said that the, uh, cost of non-payment turn on and turn off was sixty dollars. And, uh, then there was a disconnect reconnect fee. I think that that non-payment turn off, turn off fee is twenty-five, so I think, correct me if I'm wrong, we moved that from sixty to twenty-five. Is that an error, Johnny, there in, in the, in that piece there?
Uh, one second. It looks like it, yes, sir.
Yeah, it's probably a.
Because we didn't want to, um.
So they're the same.
We, we presume that we're kicking them when they're down, they're not paying for some reason, now we're just going to pile on. It really doesn't cost us a lot to do it, so, you know, we're interested in collecting the fees. You know, there'll be some people that are, you know. Don't want to pay and there's just be an obstinate and they get charged a little bit, but you know, it's not supposed to be punitive. We're just trying to, um, create a fee, so that was something we reduced.
Okay. Okay, um, so is there a motion to approve ordinance O two thousand twenty-three zero two-one, updating the City of Chavano Park fee schedule?
Motion, motion to approve.
We have a motion from Conrad.
Second.
And we have a second from Maggie.
That's with the correction, right?
That's right, uh, with the correction.
And.
Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, yeah, and that correction was just in that slide, not in the actual.
Could I, it's completely my fault. I noticed a couple hours ago, another correction. Um, if you support it, it's the fifteen percent new residential building permit is actually not in the ordinance that's in your packet. I did not want to update that, even though it was in your summary sheet and we intended to present it, two hours worth of meeting on you. So if you, if you guys do support it, please add that explicitly to yours, so we can add that to the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Pete?
Yeah, so I want to go back to our November conversation that we had about this and the only, of all the fees that you've shown, the only one that I've got questions on is the Board of Adjustments. You, you brought forward, the discussion that we had in November was to one is we wanted to be able to recoup our costs, that we wanted to stay cost neutral. But Buddy brought up a really good, uh, comment that I was thinking about over the holidays. He said, you know, he said, yeah, but you, what you want to do is also be reasonable where it doesn't discourage people from bringing forward items. And so my question is almost to Buddy, does, does eight hundred, what is it, eight hundred and?
Eight hundred dollars.
Flat, flat eight hundred is what we're proposing.
Does that discourage, is that, is that a reasonable fee?
Not in Chavano Park, I don't think. Things have gotten really expensive everywhere, so. I, I mean, it is, it is high.
Yeah.
But at the same time, I mean, that's just the way things cost.
Yeah, and, and maybe my, my frame is out of date, but that, that feels high to me as well, but, uh. But, but maybe, maybe it is because of the cost escalation. So my, my question to you, Curtis, is you said that this isn't actually, this didn't cover our cost. You said it's less. Do you have, and, and I, I'm not asking for an exact number, but can you give me a feel for? How much you think it might, is it a thousand bucks in order to, to cover our cost? Yeah, go ahead.
So the average, we only had two, remember, we only have typically two or three per year. But last year, our average was one thousand two hundred eighty-two dollars between two. The one at two or seven hundred branch was a rel, this was actually really good, because it was relatively simple, uh, not a lot of legal involved, there's attorneys and back and forth and everything. It was, but it's still eight hundred and sixty, so we would still not be fully recompensating, but it's well within range. On a much more complex, we have legal, uh, back and forth between the city attorneys and, uh, the property owners attorneys. Yeah, we have to have a partner here for that one, so, yeah, it was, uh, in the paper notice, we had to have their attorneys submitted language they wanted to notice and it was very specific, so it drove up to all those costs. was very specific. So it drove up all those costs. 1,703 for that one.
Okay.
And Pete, I'm going to go back to your comment about, you know, just looking at the data here. It seems as though if they're taking it to that level, they're already spending a lot of money as it is, especially if they're getting attorneys. And I think an $800 fee, I mean, is just part of what you're just going to have to pay.
Well, and actually, $800 is cheap whenever they're looking at having to pay their attorney, and they should understand that they should have to pay our attorney as well. You know, there, there are different kinds of variances. One is, my setback doesn't work. And having to make an application and pay an $800 fee to get a new setback that may or may not be approved strikes me as being draconian, draconian. And my recommendation on that is that we give the city manager the authority to make administrative ruling for a variance without a fee for up to 5%, perhaps even 10% of what the required setback is. So that on a 30-foot setback, Bill could bring the setback in by three feet administratively. No fees. You don't have to pay anybody anything at all. Then you get beyond that, and all of a sudden, people are having to rethink how we're, how we put this puzzle together. And when we have to rethink how we're putting the puzzle together, that can require us to hire engineers, it can require us to hire an attorneys. These people are doing something that's significant. It's not, you know, when, when your fence, when you want to move your fence two feet, I don't know that anybody, anybody on council is, is having heartburn and saying, golly, I wonder what that's doing to the whole neighborhood. But when somebody says, well, by golly, I'd like to do X, and the City of Chavino Park spent $1,700, that was actually a pretty big project. And for us to require our neighbors to bear a portion of that, I understand that we're a city, but we're stewards for the entire city. And you think about that as, as one household, that, that one household represents 0.5%. And suddenly, they're getting a disproportionate benefit. In fact, they're getting a real rebate on their taxes for that year. I, I really think that we should consider something where we eliminate the fees, because we're doing it administratively, and Bill is just taking care of all of the easy stuff.
So Mayor, what I think I hear you say is that staff should come back with a recommendation for some sort of administrative approve, you know, approval of, 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 approach of moving the setback up to a 5% or 10%.
That's right.
I want to staff that through the attorney and.
That there's no fee on that. Or there's a nominal fee on that, because it's not going to take us a whole lot of stuff. But when you go beyond that, this $1,700 thing, this was a complicated issue. And we had to get our hands around it, and, and should the City of Chavino Park have paid the $1,700? Now, something we might consider is, hey, we're willing to set this fee at $1,000, but at the point that our costs exceed $1,500, you're in for 100% of all of that access. Maybe that's another alternative. But imagine that one of our million-dollar homes comes in, and they want to do X, and it's going to cost us $50,000 to evaluate that project. And that is very foreseeable in the future of Chavino Park. And suddenly, we're all sitting here and saying, or not us, because there's a new set of geniuses up here, and they're all saying, and, and how did they come up with a fee that said, we're going to get $800? I'd, I'd like to have two of those things. Yes. So, so I'm, I'm, I'm just suggesting that we have something where those actual costs are being borne. I, I think that showing grace for the people who have variances on setbacks makes everybody happy, or makes a much larger number of people happy. And then the sophisticated things, where people are doing something sophisticated, they're spending tens of thousands of dollars. And asking, and they're, and they're hiring attorneys, and they're hiring engineers, and the fact that we have to hire an attorneys and engineers to understand their attorneys and engineers, we don't have those people on staff. And pushing that cost all the way through seems fair.
I think our attorney is telling me and whispering that we've got to set a, a set fee, that you can't do it additive based upon costs such as legal fees and other fees. You could base the set fee in a roundabout number for that, but I don't know that there's a way to.
Is there a way to stratify the nature of the variance? That variance A is a $10 fee, that variance B is an $800 fee, that variance C is a $10,000 fee?
Typically, no.
Get your mic. I'll pull it real close to you.
No. You've got to have an administrative fees. These are not fees associated with how much it costs for, because it's going to cost us $1,000 to evaluate a setback issue that's 30 feet versus only a five-foot setback. It's just a uniform fee for Board of Adjustments. Normally, you see it from about 500 to 800. That's the typical range of an applicant to have to pay. You can't force an applicant to pay, because it's going to cost the city $8,000 versus, you know, or $1,500 versus 600, $860. Or it has to be a uniform fee. You can't stratify it as you requested based on what the request is for the city manager to administratively make a decision, well, we're going to charge this much. I mean, that's also kind of a due process issue, and so there's kind of multiple layers about stratifying a cost for administrative fees and a fee schedule. If there's something else that we can think through, let's talk about that through and bring it back to you for a potential amendment.
My concern is that we are spending hundreds to 1,000 and more dollars on legal fees. And understanding these issues at the level that we have to have real live attorney time, and not, hey, this is a consult, and it's going to take me 15 minutes to understand the issue, but actually get an opinion letter out of these things. Those are sophisticated legal issues. And if it's a sophisticated legal issue, should we be handling that at the Board of Adjustments level? Now, fortunately, we're very blessed with a, a very talented group of Board of Adjustment members. And, and maybe we should be relying on them instead of outside council, because we are so blessed. But that just seems like a lot of money to be spending. And then also, the fact that the cost of publication should be borne 100% of the time by everybody that's making their application.
Setting these fees, is it a time-sensitive issue?
Are setting these fees time-sensitive?
This, this proposal that we have forward to us right now, is this, are there time-sensitive points to this?
No, I mean, we, we, we know we need to update our fee schedule by, by law to revalidate the entire fee schedule. So we, we, we pushed that forward in November, and then didn't have a meeting in January, I mean, December, so we've got it this January. I think the law requires us to, you know, if we were challenged, we would have to have this updated by.
It's every 10 years.
Every 10 years?
You have to, it's a, it's the permitting fees. You have to, every 10 years.
So if someone said, hey, it's been 10 years since you did your fee schedule for plan review, and I'm not paying that plan review, which they could probably do, there's fees in here that have not been updated in 10 years. That by this action, we're now restarting that clock for 10 years. Do I think in the next month that there's someone going to protest that and say, I'm going to use Chavino Park as the guinea pig, and I'm going to protest this fee? No. Is it, is it time-sensitive that we have to do this in January? No, other than, you know, we're pretty much there. I don't, if you're talking Board of Adjustments, I don't think you're going to get much movement on the Board of Adjustments. If there's other fees that we haven't really looked at, you know, if we delayed it, we would, we would, we would be able to look at some more. Well, if we don't do it this time, we can look at it later. I do think that the, the comment about everyone should be able to have an ability to ask for a variance. And everyone in the city does have that ability. And whether or not it's fully covered by cost or not, we're, we're still extending that. We're not making it cost-prohibitive by saying, we're going to charge you X number of dollars. So therefore, practically, what you're doing is you're eliminating a lot of people's ability to do this. I think 800 is pretty steep, but I'd also acknowledge that it's not covering all the cost. We do provide a lot of services that don't cover the cost. We don't like to do that in terms of practice, because then eventually you would run out of money. But there are certain services, I think that it makes sense to recover as much cost you can, but make it fair and equitable. What is that? Maybe if you need more time, is that 800 the right amount? Should it be 1,000? Should it be 600? I'm okay with delaying it, just, I think we're in the ballpark. But again, that's up to you establishing that, and you may need more time.
Well, the one thing that, as you presented, the water fees, to me, those sound pretty reasonable and sound. It's just the only, the part that's given me a little bit of heartburn, and I think the mayor made some really good points, is the Board of Adjustment fees. And I'm wondering if we couldn't separate those, approve the water fees or not, because I think, I think it is something that we need to start, you know, recovering our water fees at the beginning of the year. But I think this subject probably needs a little more.
While we're adding that, you know, we, we grouped the Board of Adjustment fees with the special exception fees with the Board, Construction Board of Appeals. Once we establish this, we're really mirroring all three of the, all those other fees. So we could, we could, you could approve that, make a motion, you know, you can amend the motion to approve it minus the board fees as, as described, and then we can bring that back to the next meeting.
Okay. The motions were Conrad and Maggie. And, and so Conrad, I would entertain, would you entertain bifurcating the schedule to remove from final consideration the Board of Adjustment fees?
Or Mayor, maybe we're just talking to the attorney, maybe we just defer it, and then, because we've got it all established, you know, I mean, passing it without that now isn't going to make a big impact, whether we take a look at these fees in a little bit more detail, drill down to, and then we focus next month on passing the whole thing, but focus the discussion on these board fees, without causing multiple iterations of it and confusing in terms of muni code and how we're doing things. It's probably better to defer this.
So we just want to table this for next meeting?
Yeah, do you want to make a motion to postpone consideration until the next regularly scheduled meeting?
Make a motion to postpone this until the next meeting.
Okay, do we have a second on the motion postponed?
I'll second that.
Maggie has made a second, takes precedent over all action. We'll, we'll not consider any further motions. All in favor of the most, the motion to postpone until the next city council meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion to postpone is, is 4-0. Motion to postpone is, is approved. Okay. Without objection, I'm going to combine items 8.10, 810, and 811. Discussion, action, economic development options, possible executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551087, deliberation regarding economic negotiations or related project, project, shavitel. Discussion, action, economic development options, possible executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551087, deliberations regarding economic development negotiations related to possible development options, parcels adjacent to 1604. There being no objection, I'm bringing this forward as a, as a joint item. Do we have a motion to consider deliberations for economic development negotiations in executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 5510, 551087?
So moved.
Pete has made a motion to go into executive session. Conrad has seconded the motion. All in favor of going into negotiations, executive session, say aye.
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 We are now in executive session. It is 816. It is 920. We are returning from executive session held pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations related to possible development options for parcels of adjacent to Loop 1604, and also relating to a project shavitel. No decisions were made, no votes were taken. Brings us to item number nine. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Maggie has made a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Pete has seconded the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We are adjourned.